One working mic. Hello, hello. It's me again. So my name is Ben Farrell. I am your town moderator. And again, I do want to thank you all for your patience. Um, and it's a really great turnout. Thank you all for coming. I guess we're done checking in. And is this a record? Uh, this, this would be a record for town meeting in Belchertown for the number of citizens to show up. So that's fantastic. We have one bit of business before we get to the, to the main show. So I'm going to do it from this mic and hopefully all of the other mics will get, uh, set up. In the meantime, so we have a special town meeting to, to deal with some motions from last year's budget. So I will call that motion, uh, that meeting to order. I do want to do a, uh, practice, um, vote, just to make sure that all of our clickers are working and we understand how it goes. Okay? So, the question on the floor is will the Red Sox finish the season over 500? We have a, with no, with no objection, we'll call the question. Um, so I'll open voting now. It's green, yes, uh, red, no. And I think that should probably carry the day, but, uh, I'll open voting now. I mean, they did just win last night, right? All right. All right, everyone? So there's going to be a limited time to vote. I'm going to set probably about 20 seconds. Um, and I will give fair warning on each vote that I will be closing the vote in 10 seconds. Okay. The vote is closed. Let's see what the results were. Oh, all right. We have, we have optimists in the crowd. Okay. Thank you all very much. The, does anyone, did anyone have any issues? Uh, anyone? Okay. Your votes didn't go through? Oh, okay. All right. So I think maybe one of the issues is you have to wait until I officially open the vote and the button is pressed over there to open the vote. So if you do it beforehand, your vote's not going to go through. Okay? Um, so wait, you know, I know you're all eager to vote. You're going to have 20 seconds. So maybe wait for a sec, 10 seconds and then press it. Okay? Yeah. When I say open the vote, that's when you press it. Okay? All right. So let's get started with the special, uh, town meeting. Um, and, uh, Article One, the Finance Committee.
Hello. To see if the town will vote to transfer sums of money to and from certain line items for the fiscal year 2000... To see if the town will vote to transfer sums of money to and from certain line items for the fiscal year 2025 budget, or to take any other relative action thereto. We would, I move the town transfer the sums of money as outlined below. Transfer from L M H expense, $18,000 to highway hired service. From street lighting, the amount of $5,000 to highway hired service. Senior Center Building, 1,500 to the Freedom Center. Senior Center Building, 3,500 to the Recreation Building. Taggio Building, 3,500 to the Highway Admin. Taggio Building, 4,500 to Streets slash Construction. COA wage from 2,000 to Streets slash Construction. COA wage, 14,796 to Road Machinery. Snow and Ice Melt, 4204 to Road Machinery. Police Wage, $10,000 to the Law Account. Police Wage, $15,000 to Unemployment. Police Wage, $10,000 to Inspection Services Wage. Police Wage, $10,000 to Road Machinery. Police Wage, $585 to Police Salary. Library Wage, $14,600 Fire Station Expense. Treasurer Wage, $6,000 to Maintenance Expense. Fire Department Expense, $453 to Fire Department Salary. Treasurer Collector Expense, 1,500 to Town Accountant Expense. At a regularly scheduled meeting of the Finance Committee, we voted for 00 in favor.
Is there a second? All right, with a second, is there, uh, is there debate necessary? Does anyone want to speak on this? Okay, then I will call the vote, uh, on, uh, Article One of the special, uh, town meeting. Transferring the sums of money as outlined and as just read. Um, so we will open the vote now. I understand the vote is still open, but if you're having issues with your clicker, please go into the back and we can get you a new clicker. Okay. I'm going to do a last call for voting. You have 10 seconds. Still. People still going in? Okay, I'm going to close the vote now. All right, motion passes. All right, Article Two, Finance Committee.
To see if the town will vote to transfer sums of money for capital and/or one-time costs and anything incidental or related thereto, including but not limited to the projects shown, described below. I move the town transfer from available sums in the Treasury, the sum of $58,503 for one-time capital items as printed in Article Two of the May 31st, 2025 Special Town Meeting Warrant. The Town Hall Air Conditioning Unit at $46,632, coming from the Veterans Service Bureau. And the J. Bush Middle School Asbestos Abatement, $11,871, also coming from the Veterans Service Bureau. At a regularly scheduled Finance Committee meeting, we voted for 00 in favor.
Do we have a second? All right, there's a second. Does anyone want to speak on this issue? No? Okay, so I will open the vote on Article Two to transfer the available sums in the Treasury, the sum of $58,503 for one-time capital items as printed in Article Two of the May 31st, 2025 Special Town Meeting Warrant. And I will open the vote now. Yeah. Can we turn the volume up, please? Yeah. Thank you. All right, last call for votes, 10 seconds. Okay, voting is closed. Motion passes. Okay? And we'll do this by voice vote. Um, I'll entertain a motion to dissolve the special town, uh, special town meeting. Second? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Meeting is dissolved. Um, so we're going to get started on the annual town meeting. I'm just going to check in to see how the microphones are doing, um, because this is going to require more than one microphone. Um, so I, again, appreciate all of your patience. Um, you know, sometimes technology is, makes your life easier. Sometimes it makes it much, much harder. So again, thank you for your patience and we will get started very, very soon. Thank you. Check one, check, oh. Check one, two. Hello, hello. What's that? Hello? Whoa. Hello? All right, so I understand people are going to go to the bathroom, five minutes, and then we will get started. I'm going to go, go check that. That's what we're, we're confirming right now. Check. Okay. I think, I think we're ready to go. And I, and I do want to thank all the hardworking IT people that have been working all morning. They got here 6:30 in the morning trying to work out these issues. All the ITs, all the... I want to thank them for their incredible work. All right, so we'll let people, uh, get their seats and settle down. And we will get started. All right. So again, my name is Ben Farrell. I'm town moderator and I call to order the annual town meeting, May 31st, 2025. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I, Tricia Cameron, is Town Clerk. Do attest, I have posted annual town meeting warrant in compliance with the instructions contained in both the town bylaws and this warrant.
Thank you very much. And if you could all stand and we'll cite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Test. Good morning. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
If you could all remain standing, sorry. Simon says stand. Um, and, uh, welcome Thomas Stockton to perform the National Anthem.
And you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rockets went blare the bombs bursting in air gave proof through the night that our flag was still there? O say does the star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Now you can sit. Thank you very much. So good morning, everyone, and thank you all for coming out and participating in the town meeting. Again, this is a record participation for the town of Belchertown. I would like to start by thanking the Select Board, Finance Committee, School Committee, uh, Terry and everyone in the Clerk's Office and all the other boards and committees in town for their hard work throughout the year and for putting together this warrant for the meeting. There are 50 articles to consider today and a lot of work put into compiling them. So thank you. First, some ground rules for participation. While every voter has the right to speak on a topic, that right is not absolute and there are rules everyone must abide by. All comments, questions, and statements must be directed to me, the moderator. That's my job. I listen to all of you. You do not speak to anyone else in the room. You speak to me. Does that, is that clear, everyone? All right. All comments, questions, and statements must not be personal in nature and must be relevant to the motion being considered. Debate is important, but civil debate is essential. I'm going to steal a line from our illustrious prior moderator, Terry Nagel, who said, "The Gettysburg Address was given in less than three minutes, and I don't see Abraham Lincoln in the crap." So your comments to town meeting can be less than three minutes, too. So I will set a timer, uh, for the, the more, um, uh, for, for, for motions that require a lot of debating, I will set a, a timer for three minutes. For other motions, I won't set a timer on, on the screen, but I ask you to limit yourself to three minutes. Um, so for those motions that need debating, uh, timer on the screen, three minutes. And at the end of your three minutes, I ask that you finish your remarks and let the next person speak. Um, all right. There are, there are hopefully going to be two microphones. There's one microphone right now. So for the first seven articles, um, we have one microphone. If you'd like to speak on that, that microphone is over there. Okay? Hopefully, we will get a second, second microphone for the, uh, the extensive debate motions. Um, and then I will designate one microphone as pro motion, the other microphone as con. Okay? So if you're against the motion, you'll be at one microphone. If you're for the motion, you will be at another microphone. And the way that the debate works under Robert's Rule is we alternate. Okay? And if there are any questions for anyone up here, they will use that microphone. Okay? But again, all, all questions are to me and then I will recognize the person who was, who was targeted with the question. All right. I will only recognize speakers at the microphones. I cannot recognize any speaker or motions from the floor. So if you want to, uh, speak or make a motion, please go to the microphone. That's, I will only recognize, uh, speakers from there. Uh, please refrain from applause or any out, other outbursts during debate. We have a lot to cover and I don't want to spend time getting the meeting in order after each speaker. Only members here, uh, so we moved everyone from the cafeteria, so this rule is not applicable. So anyway, there are a lot of rules and I suggest you take a look at that Robert's Rules of Order cheat sheet that was given out at the door to help you understand what's going on and how to navigate town meetings. As I understand, there are a lot of newcomers here. So we welcome you. Uh, this is not scary, I promise. Um, and, and we'll, we'll all get through this. Okay? So now that the rules are out of the way and done lecturing, I want to express my sincere gratitude to each and every one of you for your presence and participation in what may be one of the truly last democratic exercises in the world. Two and a half centuries ago, townspeople across New England gathered in meetings just like this. They raised inappropriate funds to support a ragtag group of volunteer soldiers in their struggle against an eventual victory over tyranny. This victory led to the creation of a brand-new nation that has survived ever since. This tradition of civic engagement has persisted for generations and you stand as the next pivotal link in the unbreakable chain of democracy. So we have a lot to get to. Let's get started. Thank you very much. And so... All right, I am going to, uh, request unanimous consent that we waive the reading of the articles, all the articles. There's a general rule that every article has to be read in, in its entirety. And so I'm requesting unanimous consent to waive that, so we don't have to waste time doing that. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, the motion to waive the reading of the articles has passed. And so, without further ado, Article One, Chair recognizes Lisa Lasard Pearson.
I nominate Paul Anziano and Linda Sumis as omners of the Whitey Street and Mrs. Susan M. D. Bridgman Funds, each for one year, and Mary Oldward, and for a three-year term, as trustee of the Calvin Bridgman Fund.
Is there a second? All right. Does anyone wish to be heard on this matter? Seeing no debate, I will call the question. Article One to choose the following named officers by nomination. All right, and I will start the vote now. And I've been told that the voting might be, with so many people in here, it might be a little bit longer, so I will wait about a minute and a half to make sure. Just by a show of hands, who does not have an okay on their... Alright, we'll give it a couple more seconds. It'll show, it just takes a while. There's a lot of people here. Okay. Alright, I'm gonna, ten seconds. Okay. Alright, then I'm going to end the vote now. Okay. Motion passes. Article Two, Chair recognizes Jen Turner.
I move the town accept the reports of the officers of the town with the exception of the Finance Committee.
Is there a second? Alright, motion seconded to accept the report. Is there need for debate? Okay, so we are gonna do a voice vote. So, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion passes. That's a lot easier. Alright, Article Three, Chair recognizes Mike McMorris.
I move the town authorize the assessors and the Board of Health members to appoint themselves to work in their various departments for the ensuing fiscal year at the following hour of the year. Assessors, seventeen dollars and fifty cents. Board of Health members, seven dollars and twenty-five cents.
Is there a second? Motion seconded, is there need for debate? Seeing no need for debate, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes.
I also need to recognize that at our regularly scheduled Finance Meeting, we voted four zero zero in favor.
Okay. Article Four, Chair recognizes Katie Wong Lee.
I move the town raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred dollars to be used by the assessors for legal counsel in resolving tax leases.
Alright, motion seconded.
At regularly scheduled meeting, the Finance Committee voted four zero zero in favor.
Does there exist need for debate? Alright, call vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Alright, motion passes. Article Five, Chair recognizes Lori Shen.
I move the town raise and appropriate the sum of thirty thousand dollars and appropriate from free cash in the treasury the sum of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for a total of one hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars to the reserve funds received by the Finance Committee.
Motion, motion seconded.
At regularly scheduled meeting, the Finance Committee, we voted four zero zero in favor.
Is there need for debate? Seeing none, call the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Article Six, Chair recognizes Whitney Johns Coonan.
I move the town authorize the Select Board to apply for and accept funds from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Highway Development Program or any other state grant program for use on approved town cases.
Motion seconded. Is there a report? Alright, any need for debate? Yes.
I don't have a need for debate, but people on the track can't hear the speakers up front, and I'm just asking you to make a please speak louder.
Absolutely. Thank you. Alright, anyone else want to speak on Article Six? Okay. Call the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Article Seven, Chair recognizes Angela McCall.
I move the town appropriate from the sale of cemetery lots a count the sum of five thousand dollars to the cemetery lot development accounts. We voted four zero zero at a regularly scheduled Finance Committee meeting.
Motion seconded. Is there need for debate? Seeing none, call the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Alright, we are going to check to see if the microphones are working. We're gonna need two. So I'd just like to make an announcement. So, here's that technology thing again. So, we only have one working mic, and so for these extensive debate motions that we are coming up to, I would ask you to make two lines behind that one microphone. Okay? There should be enough room in the aisle, and so a yea and a nay line, and we just go back and forth. Okay? Is that clear? And anyone in the talk, if you want to speak, just kind of wave your hands and come on down, okay? And get in line. Alright, I think we're ready to go. Alright. Article Eight A, the Chair recognizes Mike McMorris.
I move the town to fix the salaries and compensation of all elected officers of the towns as provided for by Section 108 of Chapter 41 of the Massachusetts General Laws as amended, as shown in the Finance Committee's report, to raise and appropriate or appropriate from available funds in the Treasury for departmental and incidental expenses of the town for the ensuing fiscal year, and that the various major categories of the budget as contained in the Finance Committee's report be considered separately and act upon, and further that these sums of money granted and appropriated for the several specific purposes therein designated be expended only for those purposes as specifically designated and under the direction of the respective officers, boards, and committees of the town. At our regularly scheduled Finance Meeting, we voted four zero zero in favor.
Motion seconded. Is there reason for debate on this motion, Eight A? Please let me know. Yes, we have someone from the back there, please come down to the microphone. Okay, while we wait, just a suggestion, if you know a motion is coming up that you want to speak on, please start making your way down if you're not gonna hear the microphone. I think that will help the efficiency of all of this. So the Chair recognizes the speaker. Thank you.
Marley Leal, 202 North Washington Street. Can you tell me that these recommendations of the Finance Committee for the salaries that are in the book with the Finance Committee 2026 report, is that what we're voting on?
I will refer to the Finance Committee.
So, we're gonna, now, that's maybe just a summary, we're gonna move forward and vote on... Does this microphone come louder? How's that? So, it's the summary article that's just fix the salaries and compensations of all elected officials for the town, such as the Select Board. It's not that they're the only elected officials in town.
Okay, if I'm reading this correct, and maybe I'm not, it tells me that the recommendations of the Finance Committee recommends a almost seven percent increase to the town mandate, and there are different changes to a number of different...
That's not in there. That's not in there.
So that's not in that article?
No. It's the order of selectmen, the summary for their salary, that's it. The rest of the articles, Eight B and on, will address all the other articles.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, anybody else wish to be heard? Yes, thank you.
Amanda Buhah, 172 Lilo. So can you define the salaries and the increasement?
Good morning, I'm Steve Williams, Town Manager. At the back of the room, there should have been copies of the Finance Committee Report, and you also should have downloaded them through the QR code. On page three, at the top of the page, it says Board of Selectmen, or Select Board. Those are the wages we are currently voting on. There was no increase this year.
Okay. Anyone else wish to be heard? Okay. Seeing no one else wishing to be heard, I will call the vote on Article Eight A. And I will open the vote now. Now. By a show of hands, who does not have an okay? Okay. Okay. I will end the vote now. Alright, Article Eight has passed. Article Eight A. Alright, Article Eight B, Chair recognizes Katie Wong Lee.
I move the town raise and appropriate the sum of two million, two hundred and thirty-two thousand, four hundred and fifty-four dollars and appropriate from free cash in the treasury the sum of two hundred and ninety-one thousand, four hundred dollars, and appropriate from wetlands fees, five thousand dollars, for a total appropriation of two million, five hundred and twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars for general government. Each item amount recommended in the Finance Committee's report being considered as a separate appropriation voted by the town meeting.
Motion seconded.
At a regularly scheduled Finance Committee, we voted in favor for zero zero.
Okay. Chair recognizes the speaker.
Point of order, can you confirm how many clickers are actually distributed at this meeting?
We can't, no. Yeah, so I understand the concern, but the count is based on who has voted.
Understood, but there's no...
And there could be extensions, we can't...
Understood, but there's no line that indicates not voted, so how does somebody know from a transparency perspective that all of the committees, the clickers that are being clicked, are actually being counted?
I'm attempting, I'm doing my best to make sure that everyone who has voted has an okay on the top of their clicker. And so, we're doing the best we can. So, in terms of motion Eight B, does anyone wish to be heard? Alright, seeing none, I will open the vote. Now. Okay, by a show of hands, who has voted and not, does not see an okay at the top of their clicker? Yep. I see there is. And as soon as you see the okay, you can put your hand down. And it might help just to maybe click it again. You can vote as many times as you want. It only counts when I close it. Okay, I... Alright, ten seconds.
I have a point of order. Would it be possible...
There's no point of order while we're voting. Thank you. Alright, I'm going to close the vote now. Okay, motion Eight B passes. If you're having issues with your clickers, not saying okay, you can go to the back of the room and exchange for a new clicker. Okay? So we have a point of order?
Yes, would it be possible for the moderators to assess the number of people who aren't okay? If that number is perceived to be less than twenty, my moderator will see the result, and if the result is close enough, we recount. The problem is this would take us seventy-five minutes of just voting from here to the end.
Once I close the vote, that's the only time we can see the results.
I'm suggesting you close the result, and then if it's close enough, and people missed out, then we take the time, and that happens, and really make sure every vote is counted.
We have to make sure every vote is counted on every motion. Thank you.
Can I make a motion to just oppose that? We'll see if you have a second. Nobody's interested.
That motion will be out of order. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. All right, Motion 8C, Chair recognizes Lori Shea.
I move the town raise and appropriate the sum of $4,477,591 and appropriate the sum of $1,350,000 from the available reserves for appropriation account for a total appropriation of $5,827,591 for public services. Each item and account recommended in the Finance Committee's report being considered as a separate appropriation voted by town meeting.
Motion...
As a regularly scheduled Finance Committee, we voted 400 in favor.
All right, is there need for debate on Motion 8C? You remember that, okay. I will call the vote for Motion 8C. Vote opens now. Now. And it may help to raise your clicker above the concrete if you're in the top there. And make sure you're pressing the green or red button, not the words "yes or no." Okay? Okay, thank you all very much. If we could, at this point, if you have attempted to vote and have not, do not see an okay at the top of your clicker, please raise your hand with the clicker in it. Yes, 952, no, 95.
$79,935 for a total appropriation of $35,544,353 for the county school department. Each item and amount recommended by the Finance Committee's report being considered as a separate appropriation voted by town meeting. At a regularly scheduled Finance Committee meeting, we voted 400 in favor.
Is there a second? All right, Motion seconded. And I see if anybody wants to speak on this, please start down. Chair recognizes the speaker.
Sir, 149 North Main Street. I'd say that we're reminding for our municipal office department that the dividend for 900,000, 246,000, $2,357,957,000, all the town members. And it's just $3 million over 24 budget. And there doesn't seem to be an end to this. As they got through, once you got through with mortgage of two and a half, and they went through for the full bore, and there's absolutely no cuts or anything to be made. We're gonna have to start making cuts now for the next year because we cannot continue to keep adding two to three million dollars to the budget. It's not a comfortable haul. So the rest of you that are voting and all of you just need to be aware of this. They're also asking for another $300,000 throughout the rest of the articles that will come up. And I will want in favor of that here.
Is there a speaker in favor? Okay, go ahead.
Hi, sorry, I think I'm in favor of like the last speaker, I was so confused.
But that's my fault, I only have to go in favor of the motion. Mary is in board convention.
My name is Nora DiRaffi, I live on Edmond Avenue. And I just graduated last year from Belchertown Public Schools. There is no grand investment for this town and Arsenal District. The district is one of the largest employers in the town. It is one of the biggest reasons why families move here. It hosts this very town meeting. But even without all of these reasons, isn't our children's future education enough of an investment? Isn't ensuring that our children grow up to be strong, independent, confident adults enough? If it worked for this school, I would have been studying public policy. Being at public school and fighting to make this institution more fair and safe and just. Foster the love for municipal government and democracy. I remember going to school committee meetings, budget committee meetings, and yes, these town meetings, and thinking, yes, this is democracy. It felt like that one Norman Rockwell being freedom of speech, or I'd get something from the town meeting crowd, and I was like, oh my God, I'm here. If it worked for this school, I wouldn't be in college studying... I've seen a lot of scrutiny about the Belchertown Education Association with taxes override, saying that this outside organization is threatening the town. But the truth is, that our teachers are not just members of our community, but pillars. Teachers taught me to read thoroughly and to think critically. They gave their children to grow up when I needed them most. They needed passion, they needed confidence, they needed hope. Our schools just aren't like a nuisance under taxes. They are an investment in our town's future. So I am in favor of this budget for allocation. I'm so happy that you guys are giving my this story. It is so important. Thank you.
Thank you again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Dr. Judith Thule, in for Dana Hill. I, like many of the people in this room, are former employee of the town of Belchertown. I worked here for five years. Well, the salary, did not take health insurance, went on my husband's health insurance to save the town money. The town did not contribute to my retirement account, I was self-funded. I urge anyone who has earned a living, has gotten benefits, and now enjoys a pension, as well as anybody who is currently employed by the Belchertown Public Schools, to consider this your moral obligation to fund our school system and the education that our children deserve. I also feel that our children are the ones who don't have a voice at this meeting. We are their advocates, we are their champions. If they are going to be successful, it falls to us to do. To do otherwise is a travesty. Thank you, moderator.
Yes, sir.
Moderator, Eric Weiss, 390 Oldfield Road. It is my pleasure to say, I would like to move a question.
Well, I don't see anybody else. Is there anybody wishing to be heard? One person.
Lynn Size, 57, Barton Avenue. I think I speak for almost everyone here who was against this. This is not against teachers by any stretch, I'm from a family of teachers. I think what it really had to deal with was the fact of being a bit more creative in terms of budgets, so we didn't always have to go onto taxpayers to always curb paying terribly the excess money. This is again not against teachers. You've heard it many, many times. If with COVID, you had looked into creatively possibly closing Old Spring School, reallocating those grades into other schools, it wasn't gonna lose teachers. Who doesn't want our kids to be educated? Of course we do. And again, I'm from a family of teachers, had nothing to do with that. It was just, let's spend our money better. We are obligated to our seniors who have, demographics are higher in our town, for seniors, some on fixed living, fixed income. That is what we are here to do, not against students, certainly not against teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Do you need like school? We were like really sad about hearing about like the combo. That was really happy because of the fanfare and everything. It's sad, we like have to all the teachers that are really good here. We're excited to keep being the world's greatest teachers.
Thank you, moderator.
Good morning, my name is Mary Longcort, I live on Washington Street. I'm here from the children of the boys who have passed their college years. We worked here 11 years ago, and we moved here for the school system because everyone in our lives and everybody in this surrounding community thought about what a high quality education student could get in Belchertown. And that is true. Angel appears, he's never had a bad teacher, he's never had a bad administrator, he has never had a bad experience. And that will go away if we don't fund the school. The towns around us are crumbling, our education systems are crumbling culturally, socially. We are in bad places, society, and it will only get worse if we do not properly fund the schools. Of course, there are other considerations for the taxpayer, and I understand that. But the kids should not bear the brunt of negative financial decisions made by town administrators. And that's not a criticism, there are real challenges, but this is not the area to cut. Please, I urge everyone here, fund the school system appropriately. Next meeting, moderator, I think we have motion four, which is move the question. I think we did one of that.
Well, no, it wasn't seconded, and we moved on, so... At this point, if you would like to, we had a point of order, if you would like to make another motion, we can enter the...
I don't want to get back in line, I just wanted to...
Okay. If you'd like to make another motion, you will go ahead.
Hi, good morning, my name is Kevin Ross. 160 Eldridge. I am to these school systems, graduated 15 years ago. My mother did, and her mother. These schools have been and should remain being some of the best schools in the area. They've made such an impact. I remember every single one of my teachers. And regardless of what you guys think about taxes, these teachers don't make enough, they put hours of overtime in, they deserve more. The schools deserve more. The children are the reason we're voting on this. And regardless of money, these children deserve everything we have. We should allow this budget to go through. Honestly, I don't think it is increasing enough. Let's give these kids the education they deserve, so they can have the future that they deserve.
Okay, thank you very much. I do ask that we limit applause, because again, we do have a number of speakers unless we have motions on the floor, but go ahead.
Hi, Gail Graham Marosa, 39 North Main Street. Just a couple of quick points. I'm in that privileged category now of being a senior, I'm retired. I did not have children in the school system, but I am more than happy to support this and to ensure the future of our school department. And I know there are other seniors, so I know sometimes we think of particular groups in a broad brush way, but there are plenty of seniors who are very happy, and I'm grateful that I'm able to pay that. Secondly, just want to make note as well, for those of you can stay through the meeting, there are other articles coming up that will develop and create potential programs that will help folks who might qualify for some reduction in their taxes based on income and veteran status and whatnot. And I applaud the Select Board for putting those articles on the warrant as well. So there's an opportunity to vote on that coming up.
Thank you.
Mary Alberding, Eldridge Street. I have lived in Belchertown since 1997. This is the first time this idea of proposition two and a half override has ever been presented in the time that I've lived here. We have funded the fire department and the police department and all of our other town departments. This town, I was on the Finance Committee for four years. This town is very efficiently run. We're very careful with how we spend our money. We have had a structural deficit for at least 10 years, meaning we bring in less money than we spend, not because we're irresponsible, not because people don't know how to manage money, but we're limited to the 2.5% in property taxes. But we all benefit. And what are we at now, 50 families moving into town every year? We simply can't sustain that. So if we're gonna continue to build houses and welcome families into Belchertown, we need to provide for their education. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I do want to make just a point of order for me. I cannot recognize any speaker unless everyone else has had a chance to speak. And also, you cannot be the last speaker and then move the question. So if you want to move the question, that's the only thing you can do. But if you want to speak on it, you cannot then move the question after you're done. And in the interest of time, and I understand people want to speak, does anyone have anything new to add? If not, I will, I can certainly entertain a motion from the floor to call the question.
Eric Beal, 399 Stepman Street, I call the question, please. I have a second.
There we go. Second, thank you very much. All right. So... All right, so this motion is to call the previous question. This is to end debate. So this motion requires a 2/3s vote. So what we are doing now is to end debate. We are voting to end debate, and so the next vote will be the vote on the substance of the motion. So this motion is to call the question, requires a 2/3s vote to end debate. Everyone, are we all on the same page? Excellent. So, a yes vote ends debate, a no vote allows people to keep speaking. Okay? All right, here we go. I will call the vote now. Okay, we're over 1,000 in, so if I could have you again raise your hand with a clicker in your hand if you do not have an okay and you've tried to vote. That's important. Okay. We have some over here. Okay. I will close the vote now. Again, this requires a 2/3s vote to end debate. By a vote yes, 1,037, to no, 51, the motion to call the question passes. We are now going directly to vote on Motion 8D. The funding for the school department. And again, this is to pass, the actual motion requires a majority. All right, I will open the voting now. Okay, here we go again, we're over 1,000 in. So if you could raise your hand with your clicker, if it says, does not say okay... Oh, yep. There's the server's right over there, so let's... Okay. We still have some hands up? All right, we got some voters up there. Oh, we got one over there too. Okay. All right, if it hasn't registered by now, I think you might have to exchange it. Sorry. All right, so I am going to, all right. Okay. I'm going to end the vote now. Motion passes nine forty-one, yes. One hundred and fifty-four, no. Article eight E, Chair recognizes Mike McMorrow.
I move the town raise and appropriate the sum of one million, five hundred and seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars for the Pathfinder Regional Vocational Technical High School District. Each item in amount recommended in the finance committee's report being considered as a separate appropriation voted by town meeting. At our regularly scheduled finance meeting, we voted four zero zero in favor.
Motion seconded. Is there need for debate on this motion eight E? Seeing none, I will call the vote for motion eight E. Vote opens now. Okay, we're up to almost a thousand, but if you've wanted to vote and it's not saying okay, please raise your hand. Okay, we'll give it a couple more seconds here. Still coming in. Okay. I'm going to end the vote in ten seconds. Closing the vote now. Motion passes nine twenty-two in favor, eighty against. Article eight F, Chair recognizes Katie Longley.
I move the town raise and appropriate the sum of two million, two hundred and seventy-six thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars for DPW highways. Each item in amount recommended in the finance committee's report being considered as a separate appropriation voted by town meeting.
All right, motion seconded.
At a regularly scheduled meeting of the finance committee, we voted in favor four zero zero.
Any need for debate on this motion eight F? Are people coming down to the microphone? No, okay. So, I will open the vote for eight F, appropriating funds for DPW. Vote opens now. All right. Again, show of hands, who needs an okay in their clicker? Okay, I'm going to close the vote. The vote is closed now. Okay, motion passes eight eighty-one, four, sixty-four against. Motion eight G, Chair recognizes Lori Shea.
I move, I move the town appropriate from landfill receipts the sum of three hundred and sixty thousand dollars and appropriate from landfill enterprise free cash in the treasury the sum of sixty-four thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine dollars for a total appropriation of four hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine dollars to the landfill enterprise fund. Each item in amount recommended in the finance committee's report being considered as a separate appropriation by town meeting.
Motion seconded.
At a regularly scheduled finance committee meeting, we voted four zero zero in favor.
Thank you. Anyone wish to speak on article eight G? Seeing none, we will open the vote now on passage of eight G. Now. Now. Okay. Raise your hand again, just to make sure. Okay, I'm going to close the vote now. Okay, motion article eight G has passed, seven hundred and ninety-eight in favor, fifty-three opposed. From now on, I just want to make an announcement. I think what we're going to do is to do a voice vote for the remainder. If I am in doubt, if the moderator is in doubt of a vote, we will switch to the clickers. However, from now on, I think we can get away with voice votes. Yes, okay, excellent. Article eight H, Chair recognizes Angela McCall.
I move the town appropriate from sewer enterprise receipts the sum of one million, five hundred and twenty thousand dollars and appropriate from sewer enterprise free cash in the treasury the sum of two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty-three dollars for a total appropriation of one million, seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty-three dollars to the sewer enterprise fund. Each item in amount recommended by the finance committee's report being considered as a separate appropriation voted by town meeting. At a previously scheduled finance committee, we voted in favor four zero zero.
Motion seconded. Is there reason for debate on article eight H? Okay, seeing none, here we go. I'm going to call the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye!
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes. That was a lot quicker, all right. All right, article eight J, Chair recognizes Mike McMorrow.
Should be aye.
I apologize. Eight aye. I skipped ahead.
I move the town appropriate from stormwater utility enterprise receipts the sum of two hundred and forty thousand and appropriate from stormwater enterprise free cash in the treasury sum of eighty-three thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars for a total appropriation of three hundred and twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars to the stormwater utility enterprise fund. Each item in amount recommended in the finance committee's report being considered as a separate appropriation voted by town meeting. At our regularly scheduled finance meeting, we voted four zero zero in favor.
Motion seconded, yes? Motion seconded. Is there reason for debate on article eight aye? Okay, I will call the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye!
All those opposed say nay.
Nay!
Motion passes. Now we're at eight J. Chair recognizes Katie Longley.
I move the town raise and appropriate the sum of one million, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars for the human services departments. Each item in amount recommended in the finance committee's report being considered as a separate appropriation voted by town meeting. At a regularly scheduled meeting, the finance committee voted in favor four zero zero.
Motion seconded. Any reason for debate? Seeing none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye!
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes. Motion eight K, Chair recognizes Lori Shea.
I move, I move the town raise and appropriate the sum of one million, twenty-five thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars for cultural and recreation departments. Each item in amount recommended in the finance committee's report being considered as a separate appropriation voted by town meeting.
Motion seconded. Any reason for debate? Seeing none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye!
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes. Motion eight L.
I move the town raise and appropriate the sum of one million, sixteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-four dollars for the DPW buildings and grounds departments. Each item in amount recommended in the finance committee's report being considered as a separate appropriation voted by town meeting. At a regularly scheduled finance committee meeting, we voted four zero zero in favor.
Motion seconded. Any reason for debate? We'll call the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye!
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes. Article eight M, Chair recognizes Mike McMorrow.
I move the town raise and appropriate the sum of seven million, two hundred and five thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars to the pensions and insurance accounts. Each item in amount recommended in the finance committee's report being considered as a separate appropriation voted by town meeting. At our regularly scheduled finance meeting, we voted four zero zero in favor.
Motion seconded. Any reason for debate? Seeing none, we'll call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye!
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes. Okay. Article eight N, Chair recognizes Katie Longley.
I move the town raise and appropriate the sum of eighty-two thousand, ninety-eight dollars to the unclassified accounts. Each item in amount recommended in the finance committee's report being considered as a separate appropriation voted by town meeting. At a regularly scheduled meeting, the finance committee voted in favor four zero zero.
Motion seconded, thank you. Any reason for debate? Seeing none, call the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye!
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes. Article eight O, Chair recognizes Lori Shea.
I move the town raise and appropriate the sum of eight hundred and ninety thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars to the interest and debt accounts. Each item in amount recommended in the finance committee's report being considered as a separate appropriation voted by town meeting. And at a regularly scheduled meeting of the finance committee, we voted four zero zero in favor.
Motion seconded. Any reason for debate? They are not speaking, okay. We will call the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye!
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes. Article eight P, Chair recognizes Angela McCall.
I move the town raise and appropriate the sum of five hundred thousand dollars to the capital and one-time expenditures account. Each item in amount recommended in the finance committee's report shown being considered as a separate appropriation voted by town meeting. These items include Department of Public Works wheel loader purchase, two hundred and fifty-three thousand, five hundred dollars. Emergency medical service building renovations, twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars. The DPW CDL dump truck body, a hundred thousand dollars. Police station two fan coil and hot air units, ninety-nine thousand, five hundred dollars. Javish Middle School asbestos abatement, nineteen thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars. At a regularly scheduled finance committee, we voted in favor four zero zero.
Motion seconded. Any reason for debate? Seeing none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye!
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes. Okay. Chair recognizes Mr. Boucher.
Mr. Moderator, I move that we reconsider article eight in its entirety.
All right, we have a motion to reconsider article eight. Okay. In its entirety, so A through P. What this means, it is seconded. What this means is if this passes by a two-thirds majority, then we will revote on everything we just did. Okay? So. A motion to reconsider is on the floor. Does there exist need for debate? Seeing none. All right, so I'm going to call a voice vote. It is a two-thirds. However, if there is a doubt as to two-thirds, then we will go to the clickers, okay? So. Motion to reconsider on the table. All those in favor of the motion to reconsider article eight in its entirety, please say aye.
Aye!
All those opposed say nay.
Nay!
In the. Please, please, I, this has to go on the record. In the opinion of the chair, the motion to reconsider fails. So, all right. For those, for those new to this process, what that means is that article eight is now set. We cannot bring that up again. All right, those, article eight cannot be reconsidered again. Okay. We're going to move on to article nine. Chair recognizes Mike McMorrow.
I move the town appropriate from free cash in the treasury the sum of four hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars for one-time and/or capital items as printed in article nine of the annual town meeting warrant. At a prior finance meeting, we voted four zero zero in favor.
Motion seconded. Do you wish to be heard on article nine, sir?
Yes, Bruce Officer, one forty-nine federal. The only thing with this item is we're going on to, besides the two and a half million we just went to the school department, this is an additional two hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars they're asking for. Besides the nineteen thousand they just got for the Javish Brook abatement. I don't believe these items should be combined as they are. And some of the other things are not necessity either, such as a town hall, front entrance repair and stuff. So I would urge a no vote on article nine. This is not a necessity.
Anyone else wish to be heard? Nope? Alright, so again, we're gonna remain with the, with the voice vote, so I will call the vote. All those in fav- all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
Motion passes. Article ten, Chair recognizes Nicole Miner.
I move the town authorize the select board to enter into one or more lease-purchase agreements to lease and/or purchase and to equip Department of Public Works vehicles and other equipment pursuant to the provisions of General Law Chapter forty-four, Section twenty-one C, for a period in excess of three years, and to fund the first-year payment of such agreements with the amounts appropriated in Paragraph F, H, and L of the town budget as voted pursuant to Article eight at this May thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five annual town meeting.
Motion seconded. Sir, do you wish to be heard on this article? Does the Finance Committee recommend these?
The Finance Committee does not vote on these warrant articles.
Thank you. Alright, anyone else wish to be heard? This is a two-thirds vote. Um, so again, we're gonna do voice, but if there is a doubt, I will go to the clicker. So if no one else wishes to be heard, I will call the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes by a two-thirds vote in the opinion of the Chair. Article eleven, Chair recognizes Whitney Jorn's Coonlands.
I move the town authorize the school department to enter into an agreement to lease, purchase, and equip a school department vehicle pursuant to the provisions of General Law Chapter forty-four, Section twenty-one C, for a period in excess of three years, and to fund the first-year payment of such agreement with the amounts appropriated in Paragraph D of the town budget as voted pursuant to Article eight at this May thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five annual town meeting.
Motion seconded.
Yes, Bruce Officer, Federal Street. Uh, to start with, I'd like to know what it is that they're purchasing for a vehicle? And why? The last vehicles that we had to have so bad, we're still running three.
There is a question. Um, can anyone answer that? Up, up front.
Yeah, Eric LeBeau, Director of Buildings and Grounds. Uh, the vehicle that is being purchased is to replace the twenty-year-old, uh, school food service van which transports the meals and food throughout the school district. It no longer passes inspection due to body rot and age, so, uh, we're not asking for any additional funds. The funds were already approved in Article eight. We're just asking that you let us, uh, finance that for a term of more than three years.
Okay, anyone else wish to be heard? Okay, so, oh yeah, I'm sorry, I-
Alright, good morning again, Steve Williams, Town Manager. I just wanna point out this article and the next article and the previous two are not spending authorization articles. Under Mass General Law, we have to ask town meetings permission to enter into a lease-purchase agreement that exceeds three years. The money for these leases has already been voted on. It was part of the budgets.
Okay, there has been a request to have this vote be by clicker. Um, I'm inclined to grant that request, um, so, two, this is a, this requires a two-thirds vote. And on passage of Article eleven. Alright, so I'm going to open the voting as soon as we can get there. Sorry. Okay, Article eleven, you can see up there, we'll do clicker vote on this one. Two-thirds vote required. Voting opens now. Alright, I see the numbers slowing down a bit, so we'll do the same as before. You've tried to vote and it doesn't say okay, please raise your hand with your clicker. We're getting better each time. We're getting there. Okay. Alright, I'm going to close the vote. Last call for votes. Alright, I'm closing the vote now. By a vote of seven ninety-six in favor, fifty-two against, motion passes by a two-thirds majority. Article twelve, Chair recognizes Lisa Lissard Pearson.
I move the town authorize the select board to enter into an agreement to lease, purchase, and equip a police department K-nine cruiser pursuant to the provisions of General Law Chapter forty-four, Section twenty-one C, for a period in excess of three years, and to fund the first-year payment of such agreement with the amounts appropriated in Paragraph C of the town budget as voted pursuant to Article eight at this May thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five annual town meeting.
Motion seconded. Is there any reason for debate? I think I'm going to go back to voice vote on this one. Um, so, I will call the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Alright, in the opinion of the Chair, the, the motion passes with a two-thirds majority. Article thirteen, Chair recognizes Jen Turner.
I move the town authorize the select board to enter into one or more agreements to lease, purchase, photocopies as printed in Article thirty of the May thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five annual town meeting warrant pursuant to the provisions of General Law Chapter forty-four, subsection twenty-one C, for a period in excess of three years, and to fund the first-year payments of such agreements with the amounts appropriated in Paragraphs B, F, J, and K of the town budget as voted pursuant to Article eight at this May thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five annual town meeting.
Alright, motion seconded. Sir, do you wish to be heard on Article thirteen?
No.
Anybody else wish to be heard on Article thirteen? Alright, this will be voice vote again. This requires a two-thirds vote again. So I will call the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes in the opinion of the Chair with a two-thirds majority. Sir, yes, I apologize, I didn't see you before.
That's okay, yep. Um, Hans Mueller, Eugene Drive. Um, I request, I, I move to change the order of business and consider Article forty-nine at this time.
We have a motion on the floor to change, let me get it out. Motion to change the order of the agenda to, uh, address Article forty-nine. Alright, we have a second. Alright, this motion is not debatable and requires a majority, so the motion on the floor is to change the agenda to address Article forty-nine out of order. Uh, all those in favor, this again requires a majority, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes. The next article will be Article forty-nine. And I believe the Community Preservation... Hello? Welcome, sir. Please go ahead.
James Nadal, Chair CPC Committee. I move the town appropriate from the Community Preservation Fund, Fund Balance, the sum of two-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand dollars to rehabilitate and improve the Belchertown High School playing field as printed in Article forty-nine of the annual town meeting warrant.
We have a second, alright? The motion, does there exist a need for debate? Sir, would you like to be heard on Article forty-nine?
Okay. These funds come from the Community Preservation Committee, and we always balance our budget. Now then, that being said, this project involved several people. Mr. Cameron and Mr. LeBeau from the school department, Steve Williams from the town, Kevin Williams from the water department, and, uh, Jim Nadal, and the rest of the people, uh, in the Community Preservation Committee. Now, getting down to specifics, the school department requested that we that we fund the renovation of the football field, which was in dire need because it was neglected for ten years. Upon due review of this project, we decided that it was be advantageous if we added to this petition the cost of building a well. Now, on the advice of, uh, Kevin Williams, we found that building a well would not only maintain this field and other fields, but it would save the school department anywhere from ten to fifteen-thousand dollars a year in irrigation fees. Now, this project wasn't about politics. It wasn't about money. It was about the kids. We wanted a safe environment for the kids to play in. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to be heard on Article forty-nine? Yes, sir?
I'd just like to point a clarification. Is this money gonna be used for the well system? Or are you gonna do something else with the field again?
It's actually gonna rehabilitate the field and include drilling a well for irrigation for future purposes.
That foot, football field, the stadium field has been redone once, all completely.
We're talking probably ten years ago. The well will actually be the, the key point in this which will allow them to irrigate the field because in the past several summers, they've been a drought and there's been a restriction on water usage and that's why the field is actually, uh, um, in such dire need.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? Article forty-nine. Alright, seeing none, we will do, this is a majority vote, we will do voice vote again. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Alright, motion passes. Okay, back to our originally scheduled programming. Article fourteen, Chair recognizes Katie Longley.
I move the town appropriate from free cash in the treasury the sum of one-hundred-and-ninety-four-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars to the stabilization fund. At a regularly scheduled Finance Committee meeting, we voted in favor, four-zero-zero.
Motion seconded. Anyone wish to be heard on Article fourteen? Seeing none, we will call the vote. All those in favor on passing Article fourteen say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes. And, um, in the opinion of Chair, that was two-thirds vote. Article fifteen, Chair recognizes Nicole Miner.
I move the town appropriate from the Peg Access and Cable Related Fund the sum of a hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand-four-hundred-and-two dollars to be used for operations of the Belchertown Community Channel and anything incidental or related thereto for ensuing fiscal year commencing July first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Is there a second? Motion seconded. Anyone wish to be heard on Article fifteen? It's hard to know if people are leaving or going to the microphone, so we'll give it a couple more minutes. Seconds, not minutes. Okay, seeing no one wish to be heard, I will call the question. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Alright, motion passes. Article sixteen, Chair recognizes Lori Shea.
I move the town raise and appropriate the sum of thirty-five-hundred dollars to the Belchertown Cultural Council expense account to be used for the purpose of providing engaging arts and cultural programming for the Belchertown community. We voted four-zero-zero at a regularly scheduled meeting in favor.
And I believe, I believe I heard a second, yes? Alright, motion seconded. Anyone wish to be heard on Article sixteen? Seeing none, we will call the vote. All those in favor of passage of Article sixteen say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes. Article seventeen, Chair recognizes Angela McCall.
I move the town appropriate free, from free cash in the treasury the sum of thirty-two-thousand-three-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars to the other post-employment benefits, OPEB, Liability Trust Fund. We voted, at a regularly scheduled Finance Committee, we voted four-zero-zero in favor.
Motion seconded. Anyone wish to be heard on Article seventeen? Seeing none, we will call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes. Alright, Chair recognizes Whitney Jorn's Coonlands.
I move the town vote to combine Articles eighteen, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one for purposes of discussion and vote.
There's a second? Alright, this, this is a motion to combine the next four articles, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one. Alright, so this motion is debatable. Does anyone wish to be heard on combining Articles eighteen through twenty-one? Okay. Seeing none, this is a majority vote. I will call the question. Again, this motion on the floor is to combine Articles eighteen to twenty-one. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
Alright, in the opinion of the Chair, the motion passes. Articles eighteen to twenty-one will now be combined for discussion and vote. Chair recognizes again Whitney Jorn's Coonlands.
I move the town amend the code of Belchertown, Chapter ninety-one Personnel, as previously amended as printed in Articles eighteen, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one of the annual town meeting warrant.
Second, there was a motion seconded, okay. Anyone wish to be heard on the combined Articles eighteen to twenty-one? Yes?
Marlene DeLeo, two oh two North Washington Street. I was just interested in, um, looks like all of the raises are all over the place. And I was wondering what were the criteria was for setting all of the new pay scales for, um, all of these articles. Because in a time of many communities cutting or doing a service level, I find it really interesting that we're crying poverty, but we're giving raises. So how on one hand, you're not supporting children, people don't wanna support children, but we don't question how it is- but we don't question how it is why we should be handing out raises at this time? So I was just wondering, what's the criteria and how do they get set?
Chair recognizes Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The, I think the question is more specific to Article 18 and the language that's in there, the charts. Our personnel bylaw employees, those are non-union employees, our town hall employees in the affinity house, library, BCTV, they are slated for a 2% cost of living increase. On page five of the warrant, you will see strike-throughs and new salaries that are being proposed. That is a 2% increase across the board, and that is consistent with our labor union agreements. On page six, there are adjustments to pay ranges for certain positions. These are being proposed after a review of area communities and what their pay ranges are. These don't necessarily equate to a direct increase in salary. This is an adjustment of a range. So an employee that's in this range would stay in this range. It doesn't mean they're going to automatically get an increase. That's yet to be determined. And again, on Article 19, on the bottom of page six, there's also a step chart that is also being increased by 2%.
So one more question. Do individual personnel evaluations get added into whether people get raises or not? Are there yearly evaluations utilized for this?
Correct. Employees are evaluated annually. Employees are eligible for two increases. The first is a cost of living increase, which must be approved at town meeting for non-union employees. Our union employees, they receive their increases through the budget. Employees also receive an increase through their performance. They get a step increase at the end of the year, at the end of their cycle. So if they were hired on a certain date at the end of that cycle, they're eligible for a step increase. And the chart on the bottom of page seven has 10 steps. Employees are placed into their respective grade, and every year they're eligible to move up one step. And what I would like to point out is we have some of the best employees in all of Western Mass working for the town of Belchertown. We have our roads being plowed, our police respond, our ambulances are staffed, our recreation department puts out good programs, our senior center has good programs, our library, our town hall operates flawlessly. And these raises are merited, they're warranted, and we should approve this.
And so how about the individual contracts of the directors? Is the evaluation piece?
I'm sorry, there is someone else who wants to speak?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Bruce Officer, just looking at this deal, even under Article 18A, you're looking at a little over $17,000 in increases in salaries just for those limited, it's right there. I don't think there's any point that some of this money needs to be held back a little bit. Everything is just dollar after dollar, and there doesn't seem to be any holding back. Eventually, this is going to overtake you.
Did you want to address? Yes, please.
Jill Rossi, I'm the town accountant. I just want to be clear that the personnel bylaw people are the only ones that have their salaries and wages voted on specifically by town meeting. All of the union employees get their, whatever their increases may or may not be, whether they're school unions, or highway unions, or police-fire unions, that their increases are within the budget on Article 8 that we just passed. So I just want you to be clear that the personnel bylaw employees are not, should not be singled out as the only ones getting a cost of living increase.
Go ahead.
Gail Graham Marosa, again, 39 North Main Street. I guess I just would add to that. I have worked as a full-time employee for some neighboring towns, as well as a consultant. Some of our wages do not come up to a competitive level compared to other towns. I feel there is a huge amount of competition for employees to work in municipalities when they have choices all over Western Mass. And I feel that these salaries, wages, and anything we can do to recognize them is warranted.
Thank you.
Hi, Caitlin Trisbet, 14 Edelsee. You said that this was a 2% cost of living increase for all of these salaries, correct? That's what it equates to? I'm sorry. So I'm just wondering, what was the cost of living increase for the police union, the fire union, and the teachers' union this year?
Go ahead.
The cost of living increase for our police and fire unions is 2%. The school unions are currently under negotiation. They have not settled yet.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yes, sir?
Brendan Stikini, 7 Jeffrey Lane. It seems to me the stress of costs for all our people, all worthy, our projects, all worthy, demonstrate our commitment to values, our belief in having a great town, and we're willing to make the sacrifices. What I find deplorable is the fact that our town has a commitment to these values, but the nation as a whole is perfectly willing to give tax cuts to billionaires who don't see our town and our values. They only see themselves.
All right, thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. All right, anyone else wish to speak on Articles 18 through 21? I don't see anyone wishing to speak, so I'll just call the vote. So we'll call the vote, voice vote. Motion for pass, passage of Articles 18. Is that me? Hello? Okay. All right, this vote is to passage of 18 through 21 combined. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes. Articles 18 through 21 passed by a majority vote. Chair recognizes Lisa Lassard Pearson.
I move the town vote to combine Articles 22 and 23 for purposes of discussion and vote.
Okay, again, this is a motion to combine Articles 22 and 23. Is there a second? Did I hear a second? A second, okay. Anyone wish to be heard on the motion to combine Articles 22 to 23? Okay, again, seeing none? This is a majority vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes. We will now consider Articles 22 and 23 as a combined unit. Chair recognizes Laura Lassard Pearson. Lisa, sorry, Lisa Lassard Pearson. I apologize.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town to amend the code of Belchertown by changing the appointing authority for various officers and employees of the town from the select board to the town manager as printed in Articles 22 and 23 of the annual town meeting warrant.
We have a second, thank you. All right, motion on the floor, Articles 22 and 23 combined. Anyone wish to be heard on these combined motions? Seeing none, we will call the vote. Again, this is majority vote. For Articles 22 and 23 combined, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
In the opinion of the Chair, the motion passes. Articles 22 and 23 combined pass. Article 24, Chair recognizes Jen Turner.
I move the town adopt a new fee schedule for the town clerk's fees in accordance with General Law, Chapter 262, Subsection 34, as printed in Article 24 of the annual town meeting warrant.
We have a second? Yes, sir?
Yes, this is a point of information. And I'd like to get a clarification as to why these fees went up in such phenomenal jumps, just for a clerical part of doing a couple of applications.
Mr. Chief?
John Ingram, Fire Chief. This is a fee that is, we looked at other departments around us, and we have been behind for a long time, so it's just bringing it up to the same standards as the other departments around us. It's for storage of hazardous liquids or fuels.
Thank you, Chief. Anyone else wish to be heard? All right, then I will call the vote. This is on passage of Article 24. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
Motion passes. Article 25, Chair recognizes Nicole Minor.
I move the town amend the code of Belchertown, Chapter 1, relative to the amount of fines that may be assessed for violations of the town's animal control bylaw as printed in Article 25 of the annual town meeting warrant.
Motion seconded, thank you. Anyone wish to be heard on Article 25? Seeing none, we will call the vote. All those in favor of passage of Article 25 say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes. Just an announcement, we are halfway there. Article 26, Chair recognizes Lisa Lassard Pearson.
I move the town accept the provisions of General Law, Chapter 41, Section 19K, which provides additional compensation for the town clerk as printed in Article 26 of the annual town meeting warrant.
I haven't heard a second yet. A second? Thank you, Mr. Bojer. All right, anyone wish to be heard on Article 26? Okay, seeing none, we will call the question on passage of Article 26. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes. Article 27, Chair recognizes Jen Turner.
I move the town accept the provisions of General Law, Chapter 53, Section 9A, which provides provisions with respect to nomination papers as printed in Article 27 of the annual town meeting warrant.
Motion seconded, thank you. Anyone wish to be heard on Article 27? Okay, this requires a majority vote. I will call the vote. All those in favor of passage of Article 27 say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes. Article 28, Chair recognizes Nicole Minor.
I move the town accept the provisions of General Law, Chapter 60, Section 3D, to establish an aid to the elderly and disabled taxation fund as printed in Article 28 of the annual town meeting warrant.
Motion seconded, thank you. Anyone wish to be heard on Article 28?
Actually, can I make a comment?
Absolutely.
So this is going to give taxpayers the option to donate by way of an earmark on their excise and property taxes to assist the elderly and disabled with their real estate tax bills.
Mr. Ritter, did you want to be heard on this? Or you, okay. Anyone else wish to be heard? Okay, we will call the vote on Article 28. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes. Article 29, Chair recognizes John Ritter.
I move the town accept the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 60, Subsection 3D, to establish the Town Veterans Assistance Fund as printed in Article 29 of the annual town meeting warrant.
Motion seconded. Anyone wish to be heard? Did you want to?
This is to help donate taxes to help veterans in their, if you have extra funds, if you want to give it to veterans for their homeowners insurance, or homeowners stuff like that.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? Okay, we will call the vote on Article 29. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes. Article 30, Chair recognizes Lisa Lassard Pearson.
I move the town accept the provisions of General Law, Chapter C, 59, Section 5K, which authorizes the Select Board to establish a program to allow persons over the age of 60 to volunteer to provide services to the town as printed in Article 30 of the annual town meeting warrant.
We have a second? Did you wish to be heard on this?
This would allow some relief for folks that are over 60 to volunteer in the town and get a reduction in their property tax. So it's really to help people perhaps on fixed incomes or low income.
Thank you. Sir?
I'm not sure how many people this would involve or you're hoping for, but it seems like this is going to put quite a paper chase on your people to collect these things, keep track of them, mount their work and transfer, and then get it over into the tax, into the assessors. I would think you would have quite a bit of paperwork, but that's my only thought. It's nothing to do with my end.
Mr. Moderator, can I address that?
Absolutely.
Sure. I am pleased and proud to say that your assessors, as well as the director of the senior center and the director of the Veterans Department have all already met and have developed a system because they believe in this as well.
Anyone else wish to be heard on Article 30? Okay, I will call the vote on Article 30. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes. Before we move on... Bear with us for just one moment.
Mr. Moderator, I would like to ask that we go back to Article 29?
Is there a motion on the floor to reconsider Article 29?
Yes.
Motion is seconded. All right, what is the reason for the reconsideration? Chair recognizes Town Council.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Greg Corvo, Town Council to the town of Belchertown. So Article 29 was to accept the provision of the general laws to establish the Veterans Assistance Fund. However, there was a typographical error, and instead of being Chapter 60, Section 3D, it should have been Section 3F. So just so that the record is clear, my recommendation is that you revote Article 29 to reflect the proper section of the general laws that's being accepted.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is to reconsider Article 29 to change, well, we'll revote. Again, this is a two-thirds majority required. And do we wish to speak on the motion to reconsider? No? All right. So again, this is two-thirds. Did you want to speak? Okay. Two-thirds to pass so we can correct the typographical error in the motion. So, on the motion to reconsider, seeing no debate needed, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. In the opinion of the Chair, the motion to reconsider passes by a two-thirds majority. We are now reconsidering Article 29. Chair recognizes John Ritter.
I move the town accept the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 60, 3F, to establish a Town Veterans Assistance Fund as printed in Article 29 of the annual town meeting warrant.
And there's a second? Second, excellent. Any need for debate on Article 29, Part II? Okay, I will call the question. This is a majority... Okay, I will call the question. This is, this is a majority vote, so all those in favor of passing Article 29 as reconsidered, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Article 29 passes. Okay, now we go to 31, yes? Okay, Article 31, Chair recognizes Lisa Lassard Pearson.
I move the town accept the provisions of General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5N, which authorizes the Select Board to establish a program to allow qualifying veterans or their spouses to volunteer to provide services to the town as printed in Article 31 of the annual town meeting warrant.
Motion seconded. You, you have, you have the opportunity to, to address as mover, if you want to speak on, on this motion. No? Sir?
Mike Hoffler, Old Enfield Road. Just clarification on both 30 and 31, it's a limit of $1,500 per person. If we have 2,000 applicants, does that mean the town is out $3 million?
No, I believe there's a 10-person limit.
10-person limit, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else wish to be heard? Yes. We have a clarification. I'm sorry, go ahead.
A 10-person limit on persons over 60 and a 10-person limit on veterans.
Really just seeking, I'm Gary, Gary Nealan, Warner Street, Belcher Town. Just clarification on what does services to the town mean?
Thank you. What this program allows seniors and veterans, the two questions that are in front of you today, to do is volunteer their time, and that's what services is considered. It could be working in the school cafeteria, serving meals. It could be in town hall, filing or shredding papers, supervising youth programs. Anybody that wants to participate has to be eligible. They'll be Cory and Sori checked, so they can work in the schools or in certain areas with seniors potentially. It's a very good program, and we're hoping that it goes through today.
If you volunteer for the town, a town committee or anything like that, does that count as services?
No, the question was, the microphone's not working. The question is, does time served on a committee or commission or board count as services rendered to the town? And the answer is no. This is for other duties.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard on Article 31? All right, I will call the vote. All those in favor of passage of Article 31, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Most, Article 31 passes. Article 32, Chair recognizes John Ritter.
I move the town accept the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Subsection 5, Clause 22I, which increases the real property tax exemption for qualified veterans and their spouses each year by any, by any increase in the Consumer Price Index as printed in Article 32 of the annual town meeting warrant.
Second, motion seconded, thank you. Did, did you want to be heard? Okay. Anyone wish to be heard on Article 32? All right. No, she was just walking by. All right, so we will call the vote on Article 32. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Article 32 passes. Article 33, Chair recognizes John Ritter.
I have a correction for Article 33. I move the town accept the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Subsection 5, Clause 22J, which grants, grants to qualified veterans and their spouses an additional real property tax exemption in the amount of 20% of the exemption the taxpayer otherwise qualifies for as printed in Article 33 of the annual town meeting warrant.
Motion seconded, thank you. Anyone wish to be heard on Article 33? No? All right, so we'll call the vote on Article 33. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion, motion passes. Article 33 passes. Article 34, Chair recognizes Nicole Miner.
I move the town accept the provisions of General Law, Chapter 90, Section 17C, which will allow the Select Board to establish a speed limit of 25 miles per hour in thickly settled business districts of the town as printed in Article 34 of the annual town meeting warrant.
Do I hear a second? Thank you. Anyone wish to be heard? Yes, sir?
Mike Hoffler, again, Old Enfield Road. I laud what the police are trying to do here, which is address some of the speed limit issues or the complaints about speeding. However, I don't feel that this is an effective way of, of actually changing behavior. And I feel this is a feel-good measure, but I don't know that it's really going to do anything effectively around the town. So I'm going to vote against this.
Tracy Mayhew, 339 South Street.
Yes, thank you.
I feel that if we're going to change the speed limit across the town, it should be across all of the roads unless otherwise posted, because rural roads, narrow roads, are highways of speeding, and we're not thickly settled. We have three houses on the road, and I think it should be across the town unless otherwise posted, not just in the thickly settled center of town.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. What this article is attempting to do is set a speed limit on our unposted roadways that's lower than the statutory speed limits. Currently, if you're on an unposted roadway, you're regulated by Chapter 90, Section 18, which sets statutory speed limits of 35 miles per hour in a thickly settled area, and I believe it's 45 or over in non-thickly settled areas. Chapter 8, excuse me, Section 18 also establishes requirements for posted roadways. Those posted roadways have to be approved by Mass. DOT in the state. Those are the black and white signs you see on some of our roadways, and they are regulatory and they take precedent. Section 17 exclusively addresses nonposted roadways, and it's a local option. Only the roads that have not previously been posted can be regulated under Chapter 17. Town Meeting has no authority to supersede posted speed limits under Section 18, and that's why we're presenting it this way today. And many of you who live on these small back roads, the roads that make our community so beautiful, realize that 35 miles an hour or 45 miles an hour is way too fast. And while this may not be the perfect program to educate drivers, it gives the police department an effective enforcement measure, because enforcing 35 miles an hour on Barrett Street is not enough. 25 miles an hour is probably too fast, but that's the best we can do. Thank you.
Anyone else, anyone else wish to be heard on Article 34? Seeing none, we'll call the vote for Article 34. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
In the opinion of the Chair, the motion passes. Article 35, Chair recognizes Lisa Lassard Pearson.
I move the town accept as a public way the roadway known as Hickory Hills Subdivision, and authorize the Select Board to acquire by gift, purchase, and/or eminent domain, the fee to and/or easements in said roadway for all purposes for which public ways are used in the town of Belcher Town, and any drainage, utility, and/or other easements related thereto to printed, as printed in Article 35 of the annual town meeting warrant.
Motion seconded, thank you. Anyone wish to be heard on Article 35? No, this does require a two-thirds majority vote, so if there's no need for debate, I will call the vote. Again, this is two-thirds vote to pass Article 35. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
In the opinion of the Chair, the motion passes with a two-thirds majority. Article 36, Chair recognizes Jen Turner.
I move the town accept as a public way the roadway known as Woods Edge Road, and authorize the Select Board to acquire by gift, purchase, and/or eminent domain, the fee to and/or easements in said roadway for all purposes for which public ways are used in the town of Belcher Town, and any drainage, utility, and/or other easements related thereto as printed in Article 36 of the annual town meeting warrant.
Motion seconded, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Elizabeth Eiler Pelletier, all due to, this road that is proposed to go in is going behind a row of houses that exist already on a, at best one and a half lane road. It would allow for a small number of houses to then be built, which would create a loop through the area, and at this time, it is already decently populated with wildlife, children playing on the roads, and I feel that really this is going to disrupt in a, in a major way the, the area as a whole and the beautification of, of the street. So I plan to vote against this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. What's being proposed today is the acceptance of Willow Lane and a portion of Jason's Way. These are the existing streets that people currently live on. The previous speaker just spoke about a proposed subdivision that is preliminary right now and is in front of the planning board for consideration. They are two totally different roadways and two totally different projects. So if you currently live on a portion of Jason's Way or Willow Lane, that's what we're discussing right now. And the town planner, Doug Albertson, is here if you have any further questions about that.
We have the town planner here, so any, any questions?
I'll just say the town manager is correct.
All right. Seeing no one moving for the microphone, I will call the vote. Again, this requires a two-thirds majority vote for the passage of Article 36. I will call the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The, the moderator is in doubt, so I think we will go, because it is a two-thirds, I want to make sure, we will go to the clicker system. So everyone, get out your clickers. Okay. Absolutely. So we do have, I haven't, well, can, we just did a, we're doing a revote on clickers.
Okay, I just want to point out, these are roads that are completely finished. All the construction is done, people live on them, the paperwork's done. This is the formal process by which the town can take over maintenance and plow the roads and repair the roads and anything else that needs to be done. So it's all finished. This is not a projected or proposed project. It's something that has been completed to all of our standards.
All right, so again, this is a revote, so we're not going to, this isn't any more debate, so we're going to just revote on Article 36. Again, this is required two-thirds majority, and I will open the voting now. And hopefully, with a lot less people here, it will take a lot less time. Well, yeah, that's true. Okay, again, people up there, just above the concrete barrier, so your, your vote gets counted. Okay, we're going to try with the, with your hand in the air. If you don't have an okay, on your clicker. Oh, I think we're good. Okay, then I'm going to close, last call for voting. And voting is closed. Okay. Motion passes. 403 in favor, 91 against. Passes with a two-thirds majority. Thank you very much. All right, that was Article 36. Article 37. This is the planning board will be introducing these motions.
Mike Hoffler for the planning board.
Yes, thank you.
I move the town amend the town zoning bylaw to add a definition of contractor's yard as printed in Article 37 of the annual town meeting warrant.
There, there's a second.
At a regularly scheduled meeting, the planning board voted unanimously in favor.
Thank you. Anyone wish to be heard on Article 37? Seeing none, this requires a two-thirds majority vote again. We'll do, we'll try the voice vote again, so all those in favor of passage of Article 37, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. In the opinion of the Chair, the two-thirds majority passes the motion. Article 38. Yes, sir?
Hi, Dan Baudette for the planning board. I move the town amend the town zoning bylaw relative to appeals to the Zoning Board of Appeals as printed in Article 38 of the annual town meeting warrant.
Thank you very much, second.
At a regularly scheduled meeting of the planning board, I voted unanimously to recommend this article to town meeting.
Okay, anyone wish to be heard on Article 38?
I'm just going to give a brief explanation. We have a zoning board of appeals, and they make various decisions, and whether it's a favorable or unfavorable one, it opens up appeal rights to people that might be affected by that decision. The state actually had some language put in a piece of legislation last August that modified the way an appeal can be filed in terms of who had rights and standing to actually file one of those appeals. So what we're doing here is just catching up and modifying our existing bylaw to mirror state law. It's nothing new here. It's already state law.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? Article 38. Okay, this again requires a two-thirds majority. We will do a voice vote. All those in favor of passage of Article 38, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. All right, in the opinion of the Chair, motion passes with a two-thirds majority. Article 39, I, just a heads up, we are going to do a clicker vote on Article 39. It is a majority vote, but for legal purposes, we are going to do a clicker vote. So get those out and ready. Article, Article 39 is a majority, yes?
Dan Baudette for the planning board, once again. I move the town amend the town zoning bylaw relative to accessory dwelling units as printed in Article 39 of the annual town meeting warrant. At a regularly scheduled meeting, the town, the planning board voted unanimously to recommend this article to town meeting.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Motion seconded. Would you, do you want to address?
Um, once again, this is just catching up with, with state law. We've had an accessory apartment bylaw on the books since 2014, so the last 10 years, we've had our own version, and various other towns around the state had other versions. Well, the legislator, the legislature stepped into it last year and decided there was going to be some more uniformity on how everybody was going to do it. So they added some language to a housing act last August, August of 2024, that changed state law on how to that changed state law on how to address some of these units. And, uh, the changes that we've made, uh, were deleting things that we had that were not keep, in keeping with state law, uh, we didn't add anything new. So all we did was pare down our existing bylaw to mirror what was going to be in the state statute. So there's nothing new here, it's already state law and so it's a law of the land and all we're doing is conforming our bylaw to, to conform to it.
Thank you very much, sir. Anyone else wish to be heard on Article thirty-nine? Seeing none, again, get your clickers out, we're gonna do clicker voting on this one, it is a majority vote. I will open the voting now. Okay, it's slowing down a bit, um, let's do the call of anyone not see okay on your clicker. Okay, then I will close, last call for votes. Okay, closing the vote now. Motion passes four hundred and thirty-four in favor, eighteen against. Motion passes. Article forty.
Elizabeth Poles from the Planning Board. I move the town amend the town zoning bylaw to amend the town zoning map to change the zoning classification of certain parcels as printed in Article forty of the annual town meeting warrant. At a regularly scheduled meeting, the Planning Board voted three zero zero to approve this. And we do have someone from the EDIC here to explain this if there are any questions.
Motion is seconded. Recognize the, remember, thank you.
Yes, Jonathan Spiegel, uh, Ninety Federal Street, member of the EDIC. The EDIC has several parcels, uh, planned which were transferred to our ownership when the state school closed. This is a particular parcel called Parcel D, which runs off of Route twenty-one, the entrance, uh, opposite what used to be the Grapevine Restaurant and, uh, um, those commercial operations there. It, uh, takes a sharp dog leg, uh, to the south, but, um, the very back of it has always been a very narrow keyhole and difficult for, um, developers to consider it for development. The town, uh, worked with the EDIC, the Planning Board, uh, and the, the Water Department to transfer a ten-acre, uh, piece of land from town land that abuts to the, uh, this particular parcel D, which squares off the end and makes possible better use of the entire area, um, for possible, um, business development. Uh, it's been, uh, been surveyed, it's been, uh, assessed under a grant this year, a hundred eighty-five thousand dollar grant, that Ted did soil testing and boring, and it may also provide access for the town Water Department to, uh, explore for a new water source at the back end.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions or wish to be heard on Article forty? No? Okay. All right, so this requires a two-thirds majority again, we'll do the voice vote. All those in favor of passage of Article forty, say aye. All those opposed say nay. In the opinion of the Chair, the motion passes with a two-thirds majority. Excellent. Okay, Article forty-one, Chair recognizes James Nadel.
I move the town appropriate from the Community Preservation Fund's estimated annual revenue, the sum of two thousand five hundred dollars for administrative expenses of the committee in fiscal year twenty-twenty-six and that the town reserve for fu- future appropriations from the Community Preservation Fund estimated annual revenues the following amount recommended by the Community Preservation Committee, which each item to be considered a separate appropriation. Forty-nine thousand two hundred and sixty-seven from the FY twenty-twenty-six Community Preservation Fund revenue for open space, forty-nine thousand two hundred and sixty-seven from the FY twenty-twenty-six Community Preservation Fund revenues for historic resources, forty-nine thousand two hundred and sixty-seven dollars for, from FY twenty-twenty-six Community Preservation Fund revenues for community housing. This is, thank you, this is our annual up, uh, housekeeping items as required by state law for the Community Preservation Act.
And that, there was seconded, there was, there was a second over there? Okay, just to make sure. All right, anyone wish to be heard on Article forty-one? All right, seeing none, we will, uh, do a voice vote, this is a majority vote, I believe the rest of the articles are majority vote. Um, so, on the passage of Article forty-one, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Article forty-one passes. Article forty-two, Chair recognizes James Nadel.
I move the town appropriate from the Community Preservation Historic Preservation Fund, the sum of nine thousand seven hundred dollars to preserve and restore the gravestones at the South Street Cemetery with said funds to be expended under the direction of the Veterans Grave Officer.
Motion seconded.
At a regularly scheduled CPC meeting, we approved this article six zero in favor.
Anyone wish to be heard on Article forty-two? Okay, seeing no one jumping out of their seat, we will call the vote. All those in favor of passing Article forty-two, say aye. All those opposed say nay. Motion passes. Article forty-three, Chair recognizes James Nadel.
I move the town appropriate from the Community Preservation Historic Preservation Fund, the sum of twenty-four thousand dollars to preserve the, and archive historic town records.
Motion seconded.
Again, the, at a regularly scheduled CPC meeting, we voted six zero in favor of this article.
Anyone wish to be heard on Article forty-three? Seeing none, again, majority vote, we will call the vote. All those in favor of passage of Article forty-three, please say aye. All those opposed say nay. Motion passes. Last page. Article forty-four, Chair recognizes James Nadel.
I move the tone, the town appropriate from the Community Preservation Open Space Preservation Fund, the sum of five thousand dollars to prepare a survey of assessors' parcels two oh six dash nineteen, two oh six dash nineteen point one three, two oh six dash nineteen point one four and/or others as printed in the Article forty of the annual town meeting warrant.
Motion seconded.
At a regularly scheduled CPC meeting, we voted six zero in favor of this article. This is just to do a survey to be able to, you know, delineate the bounds of, uh, open space that we presently own here in the town of Belchertown.
Anyone wish to be heard on Article forty-four? Seeing none, again, majority vote, I will call the vote. All those in favor, passage of Article forty-four, say aye. Those opposed say nay. Article forty-four passes. Article forty-five, Chair recognizes James Nadel.
I move the town appropriate from the Community Preservation Historic Preservation Fund, the sum of three thousand seven hundred dollars to preserve and rehabilitate, rehabilitate the historic Firefighters Museum located at thirty-one North Main Street and authorize a Select Board to enter into a grant agreement as printed in Article forty-five of the annual town meeting warrant.
Motion seconded, thank you.
Uh, at a regularly scheduled CPC meeting, we voted five zero one in favor of this article.
Anyone wish to be heard on Article forty-five? Seeing none, we'll call the vote on passage of Article forty-five. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Article forty-five passes. Article forty-six, Chair recognizes John Nadel.
I move the town appropriate from the Community Preservation Historic, um, Community Preservation Historic Preservation Fund, the sum of thirty-six thousand dollars, six hundred dollars and appropriate from the Community Preservation Fund, fund balance, the sum of one hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine dollars for a total appropriation of one hundred and fifty-seven, three hundred and forty-nine dollars to preserve and rehabilitate the nineteen, I'm sorry, the eighteen ninety-three horse barn at Lanson Brook Farm located at two seventy-five Jackson and to authorize a Select Board to enter into a grant agreement as printed in Article forty-six of the annual town meeting warrant.
Motion seconded.
At a regularly scheduled CPC meeting, we voted six zero in favor of this article.
Yes, sir?
Yes, uh, just due to the fact that these community preservation funds are true taxation, I don't believe we should be spending tax dollars on this building down there. This is not a necessity that we need. This is not our, our building.
This is a, a historic barn here, uh, at the, uh, Belchertown State School property, uh, that is under Nestfie's control and, uh, we felt that this was a worthy project and wanted to bring it to town meeting to, uh, um, have their say in the vote.
Yes, thank you.
Gloria Fortunato, fifty-two Dear Run. I disagree. Historically, uh, architecturally, I, when I walked into the barn and I saw it was a post and beam, but what got me was the floor. It's individual oak blocks, it's laid out in a, in straightforward fashion. It's history on so many levels and in the past, this town has come forward and out of their own pockets with money from the town, saved the Civil War Memorial, they, they, we got together, we fixed the Christmas lights, the holiday lights. I am sure, I am certain, this town will rally around the barn. It is unique. Look at the farm that, uh, the barn that burned down in Granby, it was post and beam, it was chestnut. Go tomorrow to Jackson Street and look at that building. It is indeed worth saving. The history on so many levels, a family's history, the state school history, the town history, building history. I think, I, no, I believe this building needs to be saved and I for one am joining the committee to help do it. And I expect all of you have, who have sat through this meeting and said yea to this and yea to that, I expect you to say, yes, save this barn!
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to be heard? Okay? The, this is on passage of Article forty-six, I know it's, it's, it's been a long, so if we could, you know, thank you. All right, passage of Article six, no one else wishing to be heard, I will call the vote. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Motion, motion passes. Article forty-seven. We have three to go, people, please, please, uh, let's get through this. All right, Article forty-seven, Chair recognizes James Nadel.
I move the town appropriate from the Community Preservation Open Space Preservation Fund, the sum of six thousand two hundred dollars to rehabilitate the historic McPherson Garden and authorize the Select Board in consultation with the Historic Commission and the Community Preservation Committee to enter into a grant agreement as printed in Article forty-seven of the annual town meeting warrant.
Motion seconded, thank you.
The CPC voted, uh, six zero in favor of this article.
Anyone wish to be heard on Article forty-seven? Did I hear, no? Okay. Seeing no need for debate, we will call the question on passage of Article forty-seven. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Mark, Article forty-seven passes. Article forty-eight, Chair recognizes James Nadel.
I move the town appropriate from the Community Preservation Open Space Preservation Fund, the sum of thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars and appropriate from the Community Preservation Fund, fund balance, eighteen thousand five hundred for a total appropriation of fifty thousand dollars to undertake the aquatic restoration program for the Tri-Lake System as printed in Article forty-eight of the annual town meeting warrant.
Motion seconded.
Uh, at a regularly scheduled CPC meeting, we, uh, voted six zero in favor of this article.
Anyone wish to be heard on Article forty-eight? The penultimate article. Okay. Uh, seeing no need for debate, I will call the vote. All those in favor of passage of Article forty-eight, say aye. All those opposed say nay. Motion passes, Article forty-eight passes. And we've come to the end. Article fifty, Chair recognizes James Nadel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move the town appropriate from the Community Preservation Fund, fund balance, the sum of two hundred thousand five hundred dollars to rehabilitate and restore the parking lot located at the Town Beach at twenty-one Town Beach Road and the stormwater management system serving the facilities thereon as printed in Article fifty of the annual town meeting warrant.
Motion seconded.
At a regularly scheduled CPC meeting, we voted seven zero in favor of this article.
Anyone wish to be heard? No? Anyone in the audience wish to be heard on Article fifty? Okay, I will call the vote on passage of Article fifty. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Motion passes, Article fifty passes, and we are done.
I move, we dissolve this meeting.
Yes, I, okay, we have a, we have a motion on the floor to dissolve the meeting, but I first want to say, thank you to everyone up here for all of their hard work and everyone back there for showing up and showing that democracy actually does work. So thank you all for showing up and, uh, it really is quite heartwarming to see all of you here, so thank you. And without objection, return your clickers, yes. So without objection, I will dissolve the meeting. Thank you all for coming.